Is a time for the Board of Education to listen. As a courtesy, we ask that you limit your comments to no more than five minutes. Comments naming specific personnel should be addressed privately or in writing to the Board in order to protect an individual's rights. And matters that would infringe upon student privacy will not be addressed in this public forum. With that being said, is there anyone present who would like to address the Board tonight? Seeing none, we'll move on. And Sam, why don't you tell us about Webster Thomas?
Alrighty. Good evening, everyone. I hope everyone had a great summer, some time off hopefully. And it has been a fantastic start to the new school year, even though it's already been three days. I am happy to be back on one hand and not on the other because yes, I'm still a kid. And I find myself still not used to getting up that early. I want sleep. But it's going great so far. As a sophomore now, I get to see the very confused freshmen going around Thomas, but I am always there to help and so is our link crew that has been doing a great job guiding the freshmen around, helping them with all of their classes, getting there on time or getting there in the first place. And things have been going very well. I hope that they warm up to all the seniors and stuff, you know, there's always that, you know, they're always scared looking up. I myself am short too, so you know, I still look up there too. But it's very exciting to see all these faces back and all that.
I feel your pain.
Yeah. You know, even this table's a little too tall for me. I'm sitting on my leg right now, so.
Is it a wheelchair?
I guess not.
I need a pillow. Mrs. Kuschman already mentioned that I need a pillow, so. But before even the academics started, our sports season has already been underway. Starting in the middle of August, our fall sports were working hard for all of their games have already been a couple in numerous sports. And tomorrow, our football team plays against Pittsburgh for their first home game. So tomorrow, if you want to come out and support them, that would be fantastic. And that's all for me, since there's not too much to report right now, but I'm sure next month I will have a lot more to report.
Thanks, Sam.
So, thank you.
Thank you, Sam. Lisa, want to tell us about WTA?
Good evening, Board.
Hello, Lisa.
Okay, so I'm going technology. Tonight, I'd like to talk about the Constitutional Convention. It's on the ballot in November. Many in the community are saying, well, what's that as they're hearing me speak right now? Since it only occurs every 20 years, it's not a surprise. In fact, a recent state poll discovered that 71% of those polled admitted to knowing very little about the Constitutional Convention. It's also known as CONCON. If you vote yes, it opens up our state's constitution and there are special interest groups that will advise voters to do so. What the community needs to know is opening up our constitutions is a waste of time and money, especially the few changes can all be accomplished through amending our constitution. No vote is what the WTA encourages. Vote no and say to your representatives to amend for the few changes that are being sought. And then next month, I'll share some more. Thank you.
Thank you. Okay, we'll move on. Intelligence is not enough. Intelligence plus character, that is the goal of true education. Now, these words were spoken by Martin Luther King Jr. And these words come into play tonight. For the Webster Retired Educators Association is recognizing seven individuals who each were the recipients of the Elementary Schools Citizenship Award. Tonight, the Board of Education is honoring these recipients. And I don't see where Dennis is.
Oh, they must be getting the cake ready.
Well, while we're waiting, Karen, why don't we move to your report?
Yeah. Good evening, everybody. We were thrilled to welcome 8,403 students on Tuesday. And that is nearly the exact number that we started with last September. It's actually one student fewer. So last year, we started with 8,404. And just two days ago, we started with 8,403. And it is one of my favorite days of the year. And I am trying to work my way through each of the 11 buildings to welcome the students back. And I finally got to all 11 and I finished my last three today. It's one of my greatest joys and pleasures to experience that laughter and energy that our students bring back to our district. I also had the pleasure of welcoming back our one Webster faculty and staff last week during our opening day festivities. I know I mentioned our students' energy, but when you gather hundreds of educators and administrators and staff members all in one place, the energy is electric. And we laughed together. There were some moments of tears, but mostly, we anticipated the year ahead together. I shared a message last week with the staff and faculty and my administrative colleagues about compassion and joy and learning, as exemplified in my personal hero, my dad. So many of our faculty and staff live their lives in much the same way that my dad does, compassionately connected, joyfully engaged, and always learning. That is our district's new vision. And one that I'm incredibly excited to share with you all year long through our stories with our kids, about our kids and about our faculty and staff. We all have stories to share that make a difference in the lives of others. Lastly, a quick reminder about all the ways that our district communicates with families and with our community. Be sure to visit our new website, websterschools.org, same address, but definitely a new look, for up-to-date information on each of our schools, our news stories, our staff directory, department information, our calendar, breakfast and lunch menus, and so much more. It's also a great idea to follow our social media platforms. We are on Facebook, we're on Twitter. The district also has a YouTube channel called Webster Schools Proud. And you can watch the opening day presentation to faculty and staff on that YouTube channel. And I also shared it on Facebook and on our Twitter feeds. You will also receive regular electronic newsletters from each building principal, along with district-wide newsletters mailed to you throughout the year. Families should also watch for important district-wide messages from our parent portal. At this time of the year, there is so much information to digest. Please use all of these communication tools to help as we begin another year together. And that ends my report.
Thank you, Karen. And Dennis, why don't we have you come up and do the citizenships? We already did a little intro while you weren't here.
What I regret is I missed the punch of allegiance to the flag. I must know, that's always been an important part of everything I did that had to do with teaching at Webster and education. It's great to be here. It's always good to be here.
Once again, it's great to be here on behalf of Webster Retired Educators Association to help present to all of the Board members and superintendent of schools the citizenship award recipients for this past school year. This award is ongoing. It's in its 15th year, I am told by Craig Pratt, who isn't here with us, but I'll introduce the other members soon. And it all starts in December when Craig Pratt invites us to his house for a meeting and we discuss the criteria for the citizenship award and then decide how to make it a little better if we can. And mostly, it just goes on to the next, goes back in a letter with the criteria that have been ongoing for all of those years. So as a result of that meeting, we send a letter to the principals of the elementary schools and they put this whole, they put everything in the works in progress. And by that, I mean they meet with their building representative and then they begin the nomination process and the fifth grade teachers, special subject teachers are all involved in that. So it's an exciting time and it always has been. After the students are selected, the typical presentation is at a flag day ceremony. And I've attended all but one of those at Plank South. And that's always been a special time. And it was the last time I said the pledge of allegiance to the flag. So when I said I missed saying the pledge, I really meant that. The four main criteria for this award include these descriptors. They are scholarship, leadership, sportsmanship, and service to school and community. And there are other descriptors as well, but those are the main ones that help the people make a decision about who should best get this award. Before we meet the recipients, I'm going to introduce our committee members. And they are Andy David, Kathy Foster, Deborah Beckman-Hine. And missing but not out of our thoughts would be Maureen Johnson and our chairperson, Craig Pratt. They regret that they can't be here. What we're going to do is we're going to introduce the award recipients to you and we'll ask them to stand. And then we'll read something that was written about them in the process of their selection so that you'll hear about them and you'll hear what was said about them. Okay. Catherine Ryder is going to be our first person to introduce. And Deborah Beckman-Hine will tell us about Catherine. And we'd like all the recipients to stand.
Would you please stand up? Hi. Do you like to be called Katie? You like to be called Catherine? Okay. All right. Catherine Ryder is a shining example for all students. She demonstrates care behaviors every day and showers peers with kindness. Adults and students alike can count on her to always make good choices. Catherine exhibits perseverance throughout the school day, in and out of the classroom. Her hard work has resulted in significant academic accomplishments. She continually seeks out challenges and sets high goals. She is a member of the Safety Patrol and was chosen by her peers as a DeWitt Road School role model. She is a current member of our PBIS Student Leadership Team. As a member of this team, she helped to create a strong school community by collaborating with other fifth graders. She spent time supporting younger students through buddy reading and one-on-one time working with kindergarteners. Catherine is involved in many activities outside of school as well. She has been involved with Pioneer Girls for the past five years and participated this past year in Odyssey of the Mind. She also plays in band, sings in chorus, and is active in church. She assisted in providing Christmas gifts for disadvantaged kids, volunteered in local soup kitchens, and participated in fundraisers for heart disease and cancer research. Congratulations, Catherine.
So, is Catherine Ryder here?
I don't think she's here. So, when you stood up, I was like, that's not Kate. When, yeah, when you stood up, I was like.
Yeah. Okay.
So, it's okay. So, we know that Kate's not here from DeWitt.
And I'd like to mention that Katie's older brother, Jack, won several years ago, same award.
Yeah, that's pretty cool.
Award-winning family.
Yeah.
Okay.
Yeah, it is in the genes.
Our other DeWitt Road winner is Joey Bressuti. Do we have Joey here?
Yep, he's in the back.
Yay, hi Joey. Joey is an excellent role model who demonstrates care for all students. He is thoughtful and empathetic towards others and can be counted on to persevere and do the right thing even when no one is watching. Joey has a passion for learning and a mind full of inquiry. He challenges himself and often goes above and beyond his work, which has led to much success. Joey enjoys working with others. He is a member of Safety Patrol and was chosen by his peers as a role model for our school. He was on the PBIS Student Leadership Team and volunteered to help younger students through buddy reading. Joey is also involved in intramurals, chorus, and art club. He plays the trumpet in band and participates in Ridge Runners. Outside of school, he loves to play sports, including the Webster Warthogs Travel Baseball Team and the Webster North Coast Basketball Team. He also plays flag football and soccer. Joey is involved in his church, Vacation Bible School, moving this year from participant to volunteer. He also helped family at volunteer events for Webster Girls Softball Clean Sweep in the city of Rochester and at church coffee hours. Congratulations, Joey.
Maxwell Braithwaite from Clem North. Maxwell Braithwaite is Clem North Citizenship Award winner, excels in the classroom and in the Webster community. Staff and students alike describe him as polite, respectful, courteous, considerate, motivated, helpful, and genuine. He has served as a Safety Patrol member and helped throughout the school by setting up for special events in various other ways. He is quick to lend a helping hand to fellow classmates if they are confused on a concept being taught. He helps clean up in music, art, and physical education. He never misses an opportunity to say hello and have a nice day to any adult he sees. Maxwell includes everyone in play and group work. He puts in extra time with his musical instrument and participates in the Spring Solo Fest and Community Arts Day. Within the community, Maxwell is active in Boy Scouts, participating in a food and clothing drive, and volunteering at Food Link. He loves to play baseball. Maxwell also puts others first, pet sitting for neighbors, helping others in the classroom, sharing prizes with classmates, and always offering to help adults. He is a role model, care citizen. Congratulations, Maxwell.
We have a certificate for you and a Make a Difference pin. And I'd just like to say I'm really proud of you. It's wonderful. And this is probably one of the greatest awards you can get to be a great citizen.
No, not Catherine. No, I'm doing Annika Peterson, Catherine Rogers.
So Catherine, the thing here is that you may never get talked about. You have to figure out how to.
That's true.
All right, I think it's your turn right now.
Clem South's winner, Catherine Rogers, always gives her best effort in her work. She consistently strives for excellence in the classroom and participates in class. She leads by example, not only in the classroom, but also through extracurricular activities, such as chorus, band, and intramurals. Throughout the year, she was a Safety Patrol member, always showing up for her job on time and executing it with perfection. Outside of school, Catherine was a leader on her soccer team. She was involved in community service, serves as an altar server for her church. Catherine is a great sport, is a great sport, both in the classroom and beyond. She consistently encourages classmates to do their best and treats everyone with fairness, generosity, and courtesy. Catherine also gives her best in physical education. On the field, she encourages fellow athletes and teammates to do the same. She leads by example. She is respectful to her classmates, teachers, and staff, and is kind to everyone with whom she comes in contact. Congratulations, Catherine.
Are you at Spohr or Williamsburg? Ah, good school.
Next on our list is Alyssa Duty from Plank North.
Alyssa? Got to say what his name is? Alyssa Duty is not only a model student, but also goes above and beyond on a daily basis to be kind and helpful to her peers, staff, and teachers. She demonstrates all the essential skills every day and takes an active role in her learning. She is genuine when offering to help a friend in need or a teacher. She is always positive and has a kind word to say about all. Alyssa demonstrates compassion in class by volunteering to help other students as well as praising others when they do a good job. Others look up to her as a calm and fair leader. She is dedicated to her learning, participating in the lesson, and putting forth 100% effort in everything she does. She hurdles over any challenge that comes her way and pushes herself to further her understanding. She is a positive role model to her peers. As a member of the band, the book club, Battle of the Books, Math Olympiad, intramurals, and art club, Alyssa is willing to take on any extra challenges to further her learning in a variety of other areas. Outside of school, Alyssa is actively involved in the Lakefront Soccer Club, North Coast Basketball, and Girls on the Run, as well as various volunteer and community service activities. Congratulations, Alyssa.
Annika is an optimistic, patient, and caring student who exemplifies a good citizen in our greater Webster community in every way. Not only is she a good student and a positive role model, but she also spends much of her time outside of school making a difference in the lives of others. Annika has taken part in gathering and wrapping books and bears for local police departments. She has collected shoes and blankets for the refugee crisis. She has packed backpacks with toiletries and blankets for Code Blue and delivered them to the open door mission. She has organized a mitten and blanket drive for the Rochester International Academy. She was involved in running a hayride for Never Say Never Stables. She raked leaves for local senior citizens, as well as gathered donations for and delivering Thanksgiving baskets. She simply loves to help others and does it with a smile. She exhibits a strong sense of character that is steeped in community service. Congratulations, Annika.
Taya, did I say your name correctly? Taya Masters is a role model at her school. She consistently represents the care attribute through her service towards others, leadership and sportsmanship. She is a high achiever and a hard worker who strives to do her best in all aspects of her life. She comes to school each day with a smile on her face and is ready to learn. Even with her success, she continually looks for ways to improve the quality of her work. Her energy and enthusiasm also support the learning of others. She gives up her lunch to tutor friends in math, sits with classmates who need support and encouragement, and helps anyone she sees in need of help. Taya is an active participant in her school and community. She is a safety and participates in chorus, kaleidoscope, band, and book club. She is also part of the Schlegel Road United Sports Basketball Team and the school's Nordic Skate Program. She is an active community member, serving her church and the Pioneer Girls Club. Congratulations, Taya.
I was told he may not be here, is that correct? Okay. I'd like to read his accolades anyway. Luca Russo has extensive service to his school and community. He is an altar server at Holy Trinity Church and is a member of the school's Kiwanis Club. He has participated, sorry, he has participated in many service projects. He plays a mean game of checkers with the local senior citizens and is a member of the school's Safety Patrol. Luca plays cello in the school orchestra and has participated in the Community Arts Day recital and solo fest where he received a score of outstanding. He also reads to first graders who need a bit of extra attention from a friend. Luca plays basketball in the CYO League and football for the Webster Warriors. He exhibits empathy for others and strives to cheer others up when they are sad. He makes sure everyone is included in activities, encourages classmates, is loyal, and embodies an uplifting attitude.
Let's look.
Recipients, would you please come up here? Mr. Gomini would like to take a selfie with you.
And thank you to our Retired Teachers Association for all you do.
We're glad to be here.
So, we're going to recess to the cafeteria for some refreshments for all of the citizenship award recipients at this time. Thank you all very much.
You're welcome.
Thank you.
Yep. Board members, if it's okay with you, I'd like to change the agenda because our representative or liaison from PTSA has shown up. So, I'd like to hear her report. Alyssa, can you just go right, yep?
So, I'm going to share a question with Stacy Peters of the PTSA here at Webster. And we had our first meeting last night and it was, okay, and it was exciting. We had a lot of interesting things to talk about. It was exciting for us because it was the first time that we had to run the meeting and we had a gavel. So, we need to learn to use it more. In any case, some of the things that are happening with us right now is that we have a few upcoming programs that I would love to tell people about. We have what we're calling the Coat Swap. That's coming up. Each school is given a box. They're collecting gently-used coats. And they're going to have a day where you can come in and pick out new coats for your kids. They'll be coming out and all the, actually, the PTSA newsletter came out today and it's in there with all the dates. So, that's one of our upcoming programs that we're excited to roll out this year. We also, last night, voted to hold a program called Screenagers. It's much like some of the programs that we held last year. It's the one where just, I think just came and scared everybody about internet safety. This is a similar type of program, but I don't think it's as scary. So, we'll be, we're looking for someone to organize that. Once we have that person in place, we'll be rolling out some dates with that. So, that's coming up. The other thing we accomplished last night is that we voted on our goals for the year. So, I thought I would share with you what we voted in last night. We only have four, which feels manageable. The first one's pretty typical, support and enforce the Webster-PTSA unit policies and procedures currently in place. We, our predecessors did a lot of great work on getting the right checking balances in place to keep us operating in a legitimate, functional way. And we want to make sure we support that and keep that moving forward. Number two is improve collaboration and inclusivity by fostering a positive engagement, a spirit of inclusion, openness to change, and a feeling of value for the organization and the people involved. This one came from a lot of conversations we had over the summer with various partners. This one came from a lot of conversations we had over the summer with various partners, some concerns they had, some things they loved, and we decided we probably should focus on very specialized energy in this place, especially in this school year. So you will see us, Stacy and I, will be much more visible in the buildings than some of the previous presidents have because we're trying to really deliver on this one goal. The third one is bring meaningful programs to the Webster Central School District based on feedback from educators and families. Thus the two programs I just mentioned. And the last one is to advocate for students, families, and educators at the state and national level based on membership feedback in accordance to the New York State PTA. So at the close of our goal vote last night, Stacy and I shared our quote, "This is our personal hope that we are going to be able to accomplish this in our tenure." It's lofty, I'll warn you now, but that's what goals are all about. So at the end of our tenure, we would like to see more people smile when they hear the acronym PTSA and know the value brought to their experience. And the reason we say that is quite often, we have the experience where we hold events, we do functions, parents love them, and they have absolutely no idea that the PTSA brought this. They think it's the school, they think it's parent group or teachers. So we realize pretty quickly that we have a visibility issue that we need to address, and that's something else we're going to chase down this year. We did hold training. We had 37 people from the building show up to the training, which went very well. We're going to roll that out in smaller training sessions, and again, we'll be in the buildings at some of the meetings trying to make sure some of the training is actually implemented. One of the things, one of our big messages this year, and this is my closing piece, I'll be done in just a second, is that what we do is super important, and I don't want to minimize that. But I think where we need to focus more energy is how we are doing it. Because what you do is important, but if you don't, if the how, if things break down in the how that you do it, it doesn't have the same value, it doesn't bring the same value when you deliver the what. It's important to be kind. It's, I love, when you came and talked about stories, I just love that theme because that's the bottom line. I mean, if we know stories, we know how to connect and we know how to deliver value. So I'm really excited because I feel we're very much aligned with what Webster Central School District is thinking right now as well. So on that note, any questions?
I thought your meeting last night was well-attended. And just, is there a change in venue for your secondary PTSAs? Did I see that they're being held at the public library?
We are holding special training sessions when we think we're going to have a large audience at the library because, quite frankly, the technology's better and we can use PowerPoints, we can project on walls. It's just a little friendlier for us to use that environment.
First PTA meeting, PTSA meeting is at the library.
Yes, Dorothy did that. And I don't know, I think she was expecting pretty sizable attendance, and that's why. But I can double-check that.
No, we just want to alert the public that, you know, they usually are at the buildings, and I saw it being at the library.
I think you're going to see, it's good to pay attention this year because I think you're going to see things changing up a little bit, like venue locations and how we do things, so.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Have a good night.
You too. All right, we'll move on to our capital project update. In December of 2016, the voters of the Webster School District approved a capital project that included boilers at each of our elementary buildings, as well as at Schrader. There's scheduled to be a new cafeterium at Spry, new libraries at Spry and Thomas, as well as another of other items. We're going to ask Brian to give us a status report and update on the progress of this project.
Sure, thanks, Mike. Right now, the project, what I would term a lull period. The project has been submitted in two phases. So the first phase of the project is everything that's happening at our elementary buildings, which are boilers and bathrooms, playgrounds, some ceiling and light replacement, and pegboard wall replacement, as well as Plank North window replacement. So that is all what we would call Phase 1, and that has been submitted to the state already. In addition to the elementary buildings, Schrader's boiler was also in Phase 1 because that's the only thing that's going to be happening at Webster-Schrader. So all that was sent to the state, designed, and sent in for approval in May. We're estimating probably about seven months' wait time for us to be approved, which would put us somewhere in the November timeframe, which is what we were expecting. They're a little backlogged. But it's the simplest part of this project is, are those items. There's not a lot of reconstruction. It's within the existing footprint. So about seven months, be ready to go with approvals in November, which gives us time to bid it out sometime in February, which is exactly where we want to be for construction season then, come spring and summer of next year.
Do you guys have to wait for schools out to do this, or not necessarily?
Not necessarily. There are some things that we could probably do while school's in session with some of those, with some of these items. Like some of the playground-type items, we could probably do and get done in a very quick manner, once it's approved, so we could probably get some of that done during, while school's still going on with limited disruption to the elementary buildings. But, you know, we'll wait and see what the construction schedule looks like. So that has been submitted, and we're just waiting right now. We know that it's been logged in at the state, but none of their engineers or architects have picked up our plans to begin looking at them for what we submitted. So that's the first part. Second part, Phase 2, is currently being finalized, and that is everything else. That took longer to develop because it's new construction. So the new library at Thomas, the new cafeterium here, needed a little bit more lead time from the vote to really get into the design, the how-tos, once the vote was accomplished. Whereas the other portion of the project pretty much was ready to go a couple months after the vote. This one, especially being at Spry, Spry is our oldest building, it's having a significant amount of work done to it. Especially when you talk about the boiler systems in Spry, you're talking about facilities still from the 20s in the basement that have to be touched and removed. So it needed more time for design. So that's why we're having a Phase, Phase 1 and Phase 2. So everything being done at Thomas and everything being done at Spry, we're finalizing right now. Finalizing the plans and design. We're hopeful that will be submitted end of October, more likely beginning of November because September's already upon us. More likely then. That could possibly take, because it's new construction, up to a year to get approved. The one caveat right now that's going on that the state has done, because they are so backlogged, they've recognized that, and they put out a request for proposals for additional architects and engineers to respond to, which I believe was due at the end of August. And what they're going to do is hire outside architect and engineer firms to review the projects that have been submitted. So almost using a third-party consultant. If that happens, it's possible that these two projects could be approved almost simultaneously then, because it would take what just gets recently submitted and shrinks the timeframe down dramatically. All depends on where it lands in the pipeline process. So that's where we are right now from the big-picture point of view on this project. Kind of, not all behind-the-scenes stuff, you know, you won't see anything physically happening until spring at the earliest.
A summary of this would be included in some newsletter? Or, I'm just thinking, there's probably a lot of people in the community that voted on this and are wondering what's happening. Would that be something we would do or not do? I mean, I know people are here tonight.
In the spring newsletter?
Spring, yeah.
You know, just for groundbreaking.
Okay, yeah.
But it all depends on, again, the timing of, because we definitely want to have probably a big groundbreaking event for the cafeterium here at Spry.
Yeah, the elementary buildings will start to notice when it starts thawing and start seeing some digging for the new playgrounds.
We want those boilers to be warm.
Right, yeah. I mean, that, yeah, that's, Mike brings up a very good point of how construction works. And we, you know, theoretically could run a building on a backup, but is that going to get things done quicker? But is that going to really endear ourselves to the, to everybody that's in that building that might need an extra layer because it can't warm up? You know, because in April, it gets chilly still.
We've had some interesting March.
Right, so, right. You know, even in some May, some mornings in May, still are pretty chilly, and we fire them up. So, you know, it's trying to play that balance of how soon can you get in to start doing some work?
All right, thank you, Brian, for that update. Since you're on deck.
Sure.
We have a number of financial reports for you to tell us about.
I believe the first one up is just our July Treasurers Report, first of the new fiscal year. You will notice not a lot of movement going on in the month of July. We don't spend a lot of money in July, and we don't take in a lot of money in July. I think that's the best way to sum up our July Treasurers Report for you.
Any questions there? All right, I think we'll go right on with the transfer.
Keep going. So last year, as part of our audit, one of the things that came up was a, a report for the board that we've been doing, kind of a quarterly showing you reserved, or not reserved transfers, excuse me, revenue and budgetary expenditure transfers. So the first batch you see is our detailed revenue activity report. So the first few pages are just the transfers between the revenue accounts. This is the first time the system has run this report. It's a work in progress. It's not great. I'm trying to work through to see if we can get descriptors on everything, but you see it just moves the money from one account to another. So when it comes into us, it might be labeled, you know, as we budget, it's called state aid, but then as it comes in, it's lottery aid or excess cost aid. We break it down, and this is what our auditors wanted us to show to the Board of Education. So I'm trying to see with our financial software company if we can get that, maybe a little bit more information for ease, so you don't always have to go to, if you look on page 15 of the packet, there's the breakdown of what everything is in the description, so you don't always kind of have to reconcile between that one report to the other to show you where all the transfers are going. But that is, that's something new, and, you know, it's a work in progress. It's the first year we've been doing these reports based on the audit from last year, so I'm going to try to improve those for this year coming up, make them a little bit more user-friendly. Same thing with, besides the revenue, you have a budget status report. This is ending of June 30th as well. So you could see, if you can compare the two, obviously, our revenues were higher than our expenditures, so that's a good thing. We did not run a deficit this year. So I think that's the main takeaway of these two reports that show closing of the fiscal year, besides the budget transfers also completely listed out where they came from, what it was for, and who approved it.
Any questions from the board? And then, do you want to do the budget status and transfer, or are you okay with that, too?
Very similar. It's just, yeah.
All right, then, may we have a motion, please, to accept these five reports?
I'll make that most. Go ahead.
Jan, second. Thank you. All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. Thank you, Brian. All right, board members, we need to consider the New York State School Board Association Convention Voting Delegate. Now, the delegate needs to attend the annual business meeting, which is being held on Saturday, the October 14th. They will be a voting member, and they have to go to the meeting, and they have to vote, well, we'll say they vote their conscience, but we hope they vote the way the board directs them to. So we're looking for volunteers.
What kind of things are they voting on?
The resolutions. There's 20, was it, no, 30, was it 28?
32.
32 resolutions.
Where are they?
Where are they? I have a copy, but it's a draft, and Tom has promised that we'll be receiving them within the next week. There actually is a meeting on Saturday, September 23rd, at Canandaigua, to discuss the resolutions. And I see you pulling out your calendar. Are you thinking of being a delegate?
No. No, not at all. Actually, I'm busy.
Depend, now, depending on transportation issues, I could be the delegate, but I don't want to be caught without a ride coming home.
Who's going?
That's probably the first question.
Who's going when is really the question.
Linda and I are going, but I need to be home.
Right, so you guys are leaving.
We were going to leave early on Saturday, as early as possible.
We were going to, I was going to go on Wednesday. So you're going Thursday?
We're Thursday to Saturday morning.
Thursday to Saturday.
I'm going Wednesday night, or Wednesday.
Okay, what about you, Bill?
I thought I was leaving Wednesday.
So then the four of us are going Wednesday, but how are we?
But that means we're all, if we're driving together, that means we're all staying through the business meeting on Saturday.
But the business meeting's early.
It's eight o'clock in the morning.
Eight o'clock, so it would be done.
Hopefully, it's done by noon.
Well, it has been done at noon, and it has been done at 4:00.
At what time?
Well, the convention continues on until the vendors want to leave. There are workshops Saturday morning that you could attend, but usually, once the business meeting ends, the vendors kind of wrap up too.
Yeah.
I mean, if I know I have a ride home.
Yeah, and I'm.
I'll be a delegate.
Yeah, and I'm happy to do it, too. I mean, you're going to.
You want to be the alternate? Or do you want to be the delegate?
Well, I don't want to.
You don't want to.
But I'm happy to do it. I mean.
Since you don't want to do it, I will be the delegate, you'll be the alternate, in case I get sick or something.
Okay.
All right, so.
But then you can't ride in my car, but you're still.
Why, yeah.
If you're going to be sick.
If you're sick, you can't.
You'd have to get him home.
Well, he could come home with us on Saturday morning.
So that means we're all committing to staying until the business meeting's over, and I think it's like a four-and-a-half-hour drive.
Now, Brian, I keep looking at the.
Five, four and a half. Yeah.
Schedule of events, and I know we're supposed to be presenting on Thursday, but I can't find where Webster's presenting.
There was just in the.
Do we have a, do we have a name? Do we have a name for it?
Leading Technology Change.
I don't think, I don't think it's.
It wasn't that specific.
Yeah, it didn't, it didn't indicate.
Yeah, I just saw it in the pull-out grid schedule.
My gut tells me that the app will be where we're going to get everything.
Okay.
That's what happened.
It was more, did you see specific? It was just general. It was just general.
One o'clock.
Really good.
All right.
Yeah, we can decide who's going to drive, but one of us should drive.
Or, all right.
I was going to offer.
You guys are taking the school transportation, so that means we'll have to.
I don't know. I'm looking at Brian, if we had him, if we made that decision.
We haven't, because Brad Zimmer's got to come back early now.
Oh, so you're in the same boat that we are.
So he's, he's coming back right after we present, so.
We may have to do the chessboard and figure out.
Yeah.
How big is the school vehicle?
It's a Chevy Traverse.
Yeah, I mean, how many people can join in?
Five.
Five.
Okay, so that's, yeah.
I was going to offer, but there's a possibility that if my brother, you know, things always turn out the wrong weekend, that my brother may be flying in because his daughter's at Syracuse, and I bet he'd want my car, so, even though I wouldn't be here. Because it's family, homecoming, something.
I mean, I can drive.
So.
Always something.
But I haven't found that out for sure.
All right, well, I'm happy. I can do it.
Okay. So we do have a delegate, we do have an alternate. We're all set there. Great.
Thank you. Thank you.
It's really not, it's actually, it's kind of interesting to hear the discussions that are going on.
You know, it's funny because you think it's. The people that get up and speak and advocate for certain things are the same people. I mean, you've seen them for like 20 years. Mrs. Petrillo from.
If you've been here for 20 years.
From Orange County. She always gets up and speaks. She's very funny.
Leon from Leroy.
Oh, yeah. That's an inside.
Leo.
I thought it was Leroy.
Leo from Leroy.
Leo, Leo.
All right. Let's move on to our school liaison reports. Bill, do you have anything to report at all yet? Okay. Jan?
Well, we certainly haven't met, but I would just like to once again say that PTSA meetings at Plum North have been changed to Mondays. They've always been Wednesdays, and I know I announced that in May, but I think that's good to know. So it'll be the third Monday of every month, and the first one will be the 18th of this month. And of course, the school is welcoming their new principal, Laura Blue, and their new AP, Denise Lemke, who I've met, is delightful, so. I will be going to the meeting on the 18th.
Thank you. Linda?
The PTSA meeting is next week, on the 12th, so I will be there. That's all I have.
Sue?
Yes, this Friday night is the annual Schlegel Patriot Party, and it's a really nice event. It's a free family event. People bring their dinners, they have a band, they have some games, they're, you know, they play on the playground. I think they have a bounce house, maybe free popcorn. And it's really just to get to know you, you know, everyone welcoming back. So that's a really nice event Friday night. And the first PTA meeting is September 19th. It's a Tuesday, always Tuesdays, 7:00. And I was thinking this year that I might take a copy, maybe I could get a copy from you, or several copies of the metrics. take a copy, maybe I could get a copy from you, or several copies of the metrics, and just, you know, let the PTA know what, you know, what, how we, how we look at, you know, how we look at the school district and how we think about it when we evaluate ourselves and our performance.
It's not a good idea, Cindy. Probably could all share that with the PTSAs.
Yeah, so, if I could have like twenty-five copies of it maybe at the next board meeting? When's the next meeting? Oh, that will be too late. I'll come up and pick them up. I'll call you. I'll send you a text. You don't have to remember. Okay. So anyway, I was thinking about doing that just to, you know, with, yeah. And that's it, thank you.
Anything?
The DeWitt Carnival is Friday, September twenty-second in the evening, four-thirty to six-thirty, so I'm gonna try to get to that and the next PTSA meeting.
Okay. Well, the Penguins from Clem South, they're ready to rock this year. Saturday, Phil's laughing. This Saturday, the Clem South PTSA has a kindergarten playground social. And on Wednesday, the twenty-seventh, is their first PTSA meeting. And at both Spry and Willink, their book fair will be taking place the week of September twenty-fifth through the twenty-ninth. Okay, we'll move on to our Monroe County School Boards Association. As to Steering Committee, well, we had a little problem with the venue, and we had to cancel our steering committee, and we have moved now all of our activities to the
Doubletree?
Doubletree. And it's a really, really nice facility, quite honestly. Legislative Committee met yesterday, and we discussed a number of issues. The first was, does your district have a policy on how to handle children that do not have money for their lunch? And, you know, we had talked about this with Mark before, so we're, we're in good shape. Some districts aren't. There's also discussion on advocating for full-day kindergarten, particularly coming from the schools that just had pre-K or kindergarten this year or, or trying to get it. And there was a lot of talk about pre-K. I didn't realize this, but the governor's pushing for three-year-olds when they haven't really financed the four-year-olds yet. And we're saying, why are you doing three-year-olds when you haven't financed four-year-olds? So, you know, it's, but that's the state government. But the biggest discussion, as you heard from Lisa today, was the Constitutional Convention vote. Monroe County School Boards Association is not going to take a position on this because we feel the vote is not on policy. It's really about process. Once there is a policy involved, whether it's a yes or a no vote, Monroe County will get more involved. We're trying to avoid the pros and cons because we feel one person's pro could be another person's con. And so that's where we're on. We just will be sharing information of what the Constitutional Convention is and how delegates will be picked and that whole bit. But people will be voting on the Constitutional Convention this November. Labor Relations, we're actually meeting on the twenty-seventh. The topic is workplace satisfaction in a changing economic times. Information sharing is meeting next week. That's on the, update on the, on the ESSA Plan. Executive Committee, well, that's taking place, I think, in two Wednesdays, or it might, two Wednesdays. Carm and I will be going to that.
It's next Wednesday.
Next Wednesday.
Is it when it's at night?
Yep.
Six o'clock?
Yep, six o'clock. Audit Committee, we will be deciding on a date.
Working on a date right now.
And, policy will be starting up again, or?
Yeah, I thought I'd wait till, we scheduled the first strategic planning meeting because we're scheduling them right before board meetings, and then the next available meeting, I schedule policy. Who's policy against Jan, myself? Do we have it?
Was it Mike?
I think it was, was it Bill or Mike?
I thought it was Mike. It was Mike.
I think it was Mike. Okay.
Yeah.
So I'll just, you know, I'll send out a note or ask Cindy to do that, once we figure out strategic planning.
So that-
Is that how audit's gonna be as well? Prior to board meeting?
No, we, our, our audit meeting, we threw a couple of dates out there. They could be in the morning, they could be in the evening. It's, because we have five members from the community sitting on the Audit Committee.
Now, it has my name on here. Did I sign up for audit?
Yes, you did. I have the list.
Okay. Well, I didn't get an email, then.
I was last year.
I thought Tammy was on it.
Oh, it says on here, it's Sue.
Well, let's-
And who else? Because I said I would.
Stop it, Mike.
An additional person.
Okay. So, did, did you say you sent out an email to who, to figure out the date?
Obviously, you didn't receive it.
I didn't receive the email, so that's why I'm asking.
Tammy did, right?
I did.
Okay, so you're doing it. But I'm happy to do it. You know, just let me know.
There were three different dates.
Do you want to sit on it?
I'm o- I'm okay, either way.
Okay. Just as long as you get done early.
Yeah. Eight o'clock.
All right, so actually, you kind of included strategic planning and budget advisories, not-
Wait a second. Strategic planning, just wanted to give a quick update.
Okay.
If I could.
Go right ahead.
We have been promoting our new vision. Carm's been talking about it. It's been in a lot of the introductory meetings and the T-shirts, which were bought on sale for the ugly color.
Ugly color.
That's a beautiful color.
Brian told us that the neon yellow was on sale.
I like it.
The district buildings are using the survey data to set building goals. And we're setting, getting ready to set our first core team meeting in, in probably early October, and we're gonna review our metrics. Make sure that there's none that we're missing related to our goals. And we're gonna set our agenda moving forward. So that's what we're doing, strategic planning.
Thank you. So, board members, you've had a chance to look at the consent agenda. It consists of the minutes from our regular meetings, personnel actions, a recommendation on the Committee on Special Education, as well as the Committee on Preschool Education. There are some co-op bids for bus parts and schools, our pool supplies, as well as bids for pizza and bagels, which we did not get to taste, by the way. I don't know if they're good or not.
The bid is a public document, you know, when we're opening up, that's right.
Yeah, but sometimes we go with the best price, but we also need the best taste. All right, board members, may we have a motion to accept the consent agenda, please? Thank you, second?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. Before I ask for adjournment, can we have a motion, please, to move into executive session for the purpose of discussing a personnel matter?
So moved.
All in favor?
Aye.
All right, may we have a motion to adjourn our regular meeting, please? Thank you. All in favor?
Aye.
We are adjourned. Good night, everyone.
Are we doing it right here?
We could do it right here.